Okay, we'll call the meeting to order for the city of Saratoga Springs Tuesday, January 4th, 2022.
This meeting is being recorded.
Late to the show. At 6:03 PM. Present tonight, we have Councilman Karn, Councilman Wildon, Councilman McComber, Councilman Porter, and Councilman Podesta joined us electronically yet?
Not seen.
Okay, he will be joining us later. I've asked Councilman Porter to lead us in our invocation and Councilman Karn to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Our dear heavenly Father, we thank thee for this opportunity for us to gather together this evening in order to conduct the business of the city of Saratoga Springs, and we ask thee to please bless us with discernment and with wisdom as we make the decisions that tonight we will be able to do so with a view for the best benefit of the citizens of Saratoga Springs both now and into the future. And we ask thee to please bless those that are suffering in this winter's season, that they will be comforted. And we ask thee to also please bless the first responders as they serve our city, that they will be protected and watched over, as well as those that are serving in the military, both at home and abroad. And we say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Rise and proclaim your pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Okay, first, we have the mayor and council candidates oath of office.
I solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Utah.
And the Constitution of the state of Utah.
And then I will discharge the duties. Of my office with fidelity.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Utah.
And the Constitution of the state of Utah.
And then I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Utah.
And the Constitution of the state of Utah.
And I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Mayor, do we want Becky or Holly to say anything, or is there being here quite enough?
Punch him enough?
Yes.
I think so.
Can I get one of the three of you kind of standing up together?
Kristen.
Oh, I'm there.
Yeah, just they were there, so make it easy. Okay, ready? Hey, Stephen, quit saying funny stuff, so they'll look at me. Thank you.
I don't know, it's pretty cool. Very few people get to swear or defend the Constitution. It's pretty cool.
Next on our items tonight is service appreciation plaque for our outgoing planning commissioner, Josh Wagstaff. Stroud, do you mind giving us a little?
Yeah, Josh has been here with planning commissioner for two years. Unfortunately, he decided to move to a lower-class city in Saratoga Springs. He moved over to Eagle Mountain, we're building a project in Eagle Mountain, it's on the road.
Took advantage of the value, I'm sure, of the house here.
So obviously, resident Eagle Mountain, and in your future, you're going to start on planning for a service of two years. We do have a little presentation to give to you there.
Thank you for your service.
He's learning when he gets up.
Use the chair to block my teeth again. Thank you.
And as was stated at planning commissioner's party at the last time I see Josh, this is going to lead us on program, River Grove, that again, this is developing in the future.
You mentioned that. You're one of the oldest families in Saratoga's boundaries, aren't you?
Yeah, I think the oldest.
The oldest?
Well, straighten out Eagle Mountain while you're there.
Yeah. Public input, time has been set aside for the public to express ideas, concerns, and comments for subject matter not listed on the agenda. Is anybody here for public input? If so, please be respectful in your comments. Please avoid repetitive comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. If you're here for the two public hearings, please hold your comments for that. Is there anybody here for public input at this time? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public input. Reports from the council. Mark?
Counsel, obviously, we have our retreat coming up in the, this weekend, so we're looking forward to that. We've been busy over the holidays preparing for that. As far as staff updates, we do have Ken Young, who will be giving us a quick update on the status of the planning items and issues that were raised by the council. So I'll turn the time to Ken to give a brief presentation on the status of those items.
Okay, mayor and council, we'll do some review of this. I'm going to have Dave Stroud assist in the review of what we've got going with the code amendments that are coming forward. Before I do that, just a couple of items I wanted to address with the council. One is, this last fall, a few months ago, we approached the Utah County Commission with a request for them to consider or give us direction on which direction we should head with the rezone of the mining zone properties in Utah County up on Lake Mountain. We got very little direction from the commission, other than kind of a cold response as to how we should proceed. There was a recommendation, we'll annex the property. And when we sought direction, it wasn't given. We did this previously a couple of years ago and fell on flat ears at that time as well. So I'm not sure what your desire is, if you would like us to proceed further. We didn't make official application. We went forward in a work session, which turned out to not be any kind of a work session. It was just, seemed like another county commission where we were able to present and very few questions asked. So I don't know if there's a desire for some other approach, we could just make official application. I'm not sure how successful that would be, but I did want to bring that forward to you and see what direction you might have for us.
Chris?
Yeah, I attended that meeting. Ken is putting it quite nicely. It was evident to me that there's no interest on the part of the county commission in getting involved in this at all.
To fix their 50-year-old zoning?
Yeah, so my preference, or my, yeah, I guess my preference for the direction to move forward would be just to make an application. They're not going to rezone it or change the zone. I can pretty much guarantee that, just based on the response we got. So if we're going to have any control over the future destiny of that area, then we need to have it.
So you're saying an application for annexation?
I agree. Into our city, so.
Do we have any other councilmen that are in favor?
I agree.
Okay, you got a unanimous to move forward. Okay?
When we initiate it, there's no fees involved, right? We waive those?
Well, the county will have some.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll look at that. We'll also want to work with the property owners, because they will have some say in that particular option. So we'll start working with them and we'll start moving down that path, if that's the direction you'd like us to do. Happy to do that.
Okay. There were a couple of property owners who spoke at the hearing not in favor of a rezone, and we didn't speak about annexation necessarily with them, but I'm not sure if that would be favorable with them. So we may be successful on some properties, we may have some.
But if the BLM and those come in, it's an island.
Then we create islands.
It really doesn't matter.
Potentially, yeah.
If the BLM will go ahead.
Well, and you've got to remember, so there's, we just received notice this week, or last week, that the BLM is in the process of transferring some of their property to SITLA. And so I believe that that might be part of a SITLA annexation at that point, so we can certainly reach out to them. Again, if we get a large enough mass of property owners that are annexing into the city, then I think you, I believe you need 50% or more of the property owners by area to participate with that. So again, we'll research that and we'll start working on that and come forward with some ideas. I think we've got a clear direction from you. Since we are not going to continue to pursue the option with county, we'll begin the other options that we have available to us.
And it's, we service this, we're the first responders to it, I think it, there's a lot of good arguments that we can do.
Okay. Also, we are underway with our updated, the general plan. We're having a second or a third meeting, actually, with consultants tomorrow afternoon. They have requested, and I think it's a good idea, that we have two city councilmen appointed to assist with our stakeholder meeting, so we're going to reach out to various stakeholder groups in the community. And we're wondering if mayor or council, if you'd like to decide collectively if there are two council.
I did, I volunteered.
Okay, did we already do this? I apologize if that's the case.
Yeah, Chris and Chris 2.0.
Will you attend that tomorrow?
You can attend tomorrow, it's not a stakeholder meeting tomorrow, but if you would like to be apprised of.
Just send it for that, please.
Okay. It's actually going to be, it's going to be held at the fire station, so I'm not sure of the capabilities for Zoom there, but North Station.
At what time?
3:30.
They have like.
I will try.
Okay.
You can just do it Zoom over any one of your laptops.
Okay, well.
You just need to set up a departmental Zoom meeting, invite these two to it, and then it should work for them. All right, thank you. So getting into the code amendments, the first one that I'm going to address, and then I'll turn it over to David Stroud, is the IADUs, or the internal accessory dwelling units map that we've been requested to look at. So the objective with this amendment that we're bringing forward is to include as much of the developed community in the residential areas as possible in the 25% exempted area. We have gone back and, we don't have a map ready for you tonight, we will hopefully by our next meeting on the 18th. But what we're trying to accomplish with that is eliminating all roads, open spaces, churches, schools, those properties that would otherwise not be eligible for the development of an IADU. So we're looking solely at those residential lots and properties where that could be applied, and then, of course, otherwise being eligible as per lot size and any other requirements we have. So with that, we do have some preliminary numbers. The developed community currently represents 32% of that, so we wouldn't be able to fit all of that into our exempted numbers, however.
If I could, the state does anticipate that this is at buildout, and so, as I was talking with Cameron Deal at the League of Cities and Towns, we're going to try and make that number as small as possible now, but we can anticipate that future developed area as part of that, as part of that calculation.
Right.
So we'll look at making that work as best we can.
So we're working with Brian Gallegos, or Galegos, I guess is how you say his name, in creating a map that would include as much as we can. We're looking at some of the newer developed properties, especially those with community plans, and taking those out of our total figure so that we can get as much of what's left in the 25% exempted status. So we will refine that and bring that forward to you at our next city council meeting. Otherwise, I'll let David Stroud review the other proposed code amendments that both we have been working on and have been requested by council to bring forward.
In your packet today, there's a combined Word document, probably PDF as well, actually, that has several, what would be the next go-around, aside from tonight, obviously, we have a Title 19 changed today, but at the next city council meeting will be a work session for multiple sections of the code. One will deal with home occupations, about where you can park a trailer, dealing with home occupation. The Vax clinic, we were seeing these pop up now, we thought, well, let's make that official temporary use. Probably not the end of when we're going to have these, so let's formally get it in the code. I know some other cities have actually done that as well, and so we'll put that into temporary uses. The scooters, you know, not so prevalent here in Saratoga Springs, but you go to Provo, Salt Lake, whatever, the largest cities, you see a lot of the, I know Lime is one brand, one scooter business. We have a potential code now to regulate where those scooters can go. The opportunity for the council to put out for bid to have, you know, potentially maybe just one provider allow scooters. And so that will be there. The food truck ordinance, we were anticipating changes at the last legislative session by the legislature for food trucks, nothing came about on that, so we already have the draft ready, and so we'll bring that one forward as well. The artificial turf, we discussed a year ago. I did have a conversation here recently with a, actually installer in Draper, to get some ideas of, you know, based on what, if you were to put in the city code, ideally, what would you see as, and I made a couple of slight tweaks to the code we had, based on what he said, and so that will come back to you as well. And Ken covered ADU, and that's what will be for the work session at the next meeting.
Okay. Councilman Wildon?
We do have.
Oh, Councilman Wildon's got a quick question.
You can go ahead. My, Mark, it's not planning, I think it's engineering, curb cuts?
That will also be coming forward shortly. Jeremy's working on that.
Okay.
Yeah. So you likely didn't have a chance to see the drafts that we have proposed for these code amendments. They were just put into the Dropbox this afternoon, so, but if you do have questions or would like to review that prior to next time, it is there for your availability now.
Which file is it?
The filing Title 19.
Yeah.
Oh, that was put in the.
That's not for tonight.
Yeah, I know, okay.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. Okay, quarterly reports are in the packet. Consent calendar, there's been a request to pull item one until our next meeting.
I would say until a future.
Do you want a motion?
Yeah, if I.
All right, I move that we approve consent items two through five, as listed on the agenda.
A second.
Okay, I have a first from Councilman Porter, second from Councilman Karn.
There was findings and conditions in there.
Including any findings and conditions.
amended second.
amended. Okay, Councilman Karn?
Aye.
Wildon?
Aye.
McComber?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Oh, is he? Okay, Councilman Podesta?
I heard a very muted eye. He's on one of these.
I didn't even know he had jumped on yet.
Try that again, Ryan.
Better.
I could sort of hear you.
What was that?
We need to remove item one.
Remove.
We did that in the motion.
No, we didn't, they didn't actually say it in the motion.
We just did two through five.
He disapproved two through five, he didn't say anything.
So do you want me to make a motion on that?
Yes.
Just do a new one, yeah.
Huh?
Do a new one for item one.
Okay. Chris, you already, do you want?
Ryan? Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, okay. I move that we approve consent items two through five, removing item one until a future meeting, with, and including any staff findings and conditions with the associated items.
And I second that.
So I have a first from Councilman Porter, a second from Councilman Karn, any further discussion?
Do we have to remove, or deny the first motion, because we're now doing a second motion on the exact same, but just adding something else? We didn't amend the first motion, so we probably have to.
Probably, yeah. Just do a separate motion.
So we'll finish this one, but then we'll.
This is defeating the purpose of the consent calendar.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have any motion to vote on?
We did.
We already voted on one.
And we're overriding it, but we didn't say that.
We'll just do a new motion specific to item one, that's it.
I didn't, okay, I didn't need this, I have a motion to table that.
Fine, I move that we table item one until a future meeting.
That's good.
Okay.
I second that.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carrot, motion carrot.
Now we don't have to mess with it.
Okay. Public hearing, Saratoga Commons, who's got this one?
Planning?
Yeah, I do, mayor, for some reason, my, I cannot, there we go, now I can finally get to, it was not dragging earlier, so let's go back. I'm sorry, I got, we have three monitors out and I got to do it based on what I can see on that one, and that's too far away for my eyes.
Not alone.
I'm going to keep it here, if that's okay with these side ones, so you know it's coming up. So Saratoga Commons, man, it's not scrolling through this.
Let's just go old school, let's ignore the technology and let's explain to mayor and council, they got their papers, they have some details in the.
Yeah, Saratoga Commons is an annexation just south of Pioneer Crossing on Saratoga Road. It comes as two parcels, 2.69 acres and one acre. The applicant is requesting now, at this point, it will be regional commercial. Initially, when they first met with us, they would like to have had part of, part of office warehouse, with the changes you made on the 7th, that's not possible. However, we are going to have a code in place, we're going to fast-track a code for, to replace the office warehouse, so potentially, I suspect the applicant may come back then again, through whatever code we get in place. So right now, it's about 3.69 acres, two parcels, which would encompass the regional commercial zone.
Just a question, because we are reworking that code, hopefully, they can provide any useful input as to what would make that new code, you know. I know that, talking with other developers, they've expressed some interest in, you know, let's get it right the first time, rather than having to fix it again, so.
Yeah, no, we discussed it today, we're going to, we're going to fast-track this, we'll need a staff tomorrow to get the initial, how we're going to proceed forward with this.
Okay, excellent.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so we'll open the mic up for any public input on this annexation. Please be respectful in your comments, please date your name and address for the record, please avoid repetitive comments, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Is anybody here for public hearing on the side? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there comments from the council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve public hearing item number one, including staff findings and conditions.
I have a first from Councilman Wildon.
Second.
Second, Councilman Porter, any further discussion on the motion? Podesta?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
McComber?
Aye.
Wildon?
Aye.
Karn?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We have the public hearing for the Rushton West Annexation and Development Agreement.
Good morning. Good evening, mayor and council. The applicant has, or the city is requesting a annexation of approximately 168 acres west of Canton Ridge. You'll see on page two of the staff report where that proposed annexation is. You'll remember previous, a few, a couple of years ago, that the, there was another annexation for Canton Ridge, just, that encompasses part of the corridor and west of, was it Meadow Brook? Anyways, that was zoned R110. The proposed annexation, the general plan is a combination of low density and rural residential. The proposed zoning that the applicant has requested, and you'll see it in your staff, or the development agreement as well, is our, it's a medium density of R36. That's the lowest zone that they're proposing in their subdivision, as you can see on the concept plan. However, the overall density is, of the entire project will be three units per acre. So there is the development agreement, there's a lot of things involved with the development agreement, and we can go over those in more detail if you'd like. Other than that, I mean, we can go through the densities a little bit more. One thing to understand in the development agreement, that the concept plan that is proposed within the development agreement includes an approximate 244 acres, and so that density is over all of that. They have combined part of the previous annexation agreement with that of the new annexation agreement, or annexation and development agreement. Everything west of the corridor is, except for the current application of Canton Ridge West, which is 80, about 82, or 82 lots, that's already in the preliminary and final plat stages. The remaining, there's approximately 216 acre, or 216 lots in the R110 zone, there is a concept plan that has been submitted for that, 216 lots. In the development agreement, or in the staff report, if you would look at the concept plan, it's the yellow and orange lots just west of the corridor. Those are, those were the, that's the area that was involved with the previous annexation and development agreement for Canton Ridge. However, the densities are based off of that, if you were to remove that 216 acres, or 216 lots, you would still have approximately three units per acre on the remaining amount on that 160 acres.
Gene, if I could?
Yes.
I want to jump in real quick. One of the things that I want to really thank the applicant for is preserving the large acre lot proposal that the council has in the general plan. And so in order for us to get that, the large, the half acre lots, the third acre lots, the quarter acre lots, in order to get that, the acreage will be calculated based on the developable land, and so they're looking for some product that will be smaller, but that is being offset by the much larger footprints that some of those other lots are doing, and that is at the direct request of the mayor and council, and we feel is completely in line with the requests of some of our residents who have been searching for those large acreage lots. And so we want to thank them for that, also want to thank them for their participation. They'll be advancing us $10 million to help with the construction of Foothill Boulevard and other infrastructure for Foothill, and in exchange, as part of the development agreement, they'll be receiving credits for their development activities and things of that nature. So again, overall, it's three units to the acre. on the developable acreage that's there, as well as a tremendous opportunity for us to get Foothill built and be a great partner with this annexation. And so, they've really jumped in, and I, again, I apologize for cutting you off, Gina, but I did wanted to, to hit on the highlights of the large acre lots, the, the large contribution to help get Foothill Boulevard built soon. On a side note, we'll be going out to bid on that here, probably January, February, with that project out to bid here shortly, and so we're very excited about the opportunities that this is, is offering us.
So our engineering plans are done?
They're, they're near completed. They're, they're nearly completed, and so we can share those with you. They're also donating acreage for.
Correct.
Correct.
And. And that's in your, in your staff report.
Yeah.
It was Exhibit C, I believe. You'll see that portion that was, that's being dedicated to the city for the, the corridor.
And again, I apologize, Gina, for cutting you off.
That's okay.
Without the technology, there's just a lot of bullet points that are probably getting missed, and we wanna just thank the applicant for their application and adhering to the general plan that, that shows those large, large acreage properties.
There is a large contribution by the applicant to, to help move this along with the infrastructure, as, as Mark has said. In the, in the development agreement, and I included it into, in your staff report, on, if I could get to this, on page five of the staff report, it does show the exact verbiage from the development agreement, breaking down that, if you had recognized that, Kevin also went in and clarified some minimum lot numbers for some of those acreage sizes, so that we, but the verbiage that I really wanted to point out is that it will always remain, the entire development as, as it goes through, will only have, will, the overall development will only be able to do three acres, three units per acre. So, but again, it provides some, some lower density or higher, and higher density within that, as Mark explained. Other than that, staff does recommend approval of the annexation agreement, the annexation, the annexation agreement and development agreement.
We do have the applicant here, Larry's here, if, if he'd like to.
If you wanna comment and answer questions.
Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, just that it's been a pleasure working with your city. Uh, this is, we have another project that we're working on where the old horse barn is by the, by this, the fire station up on 1200 North. So, we'll be taking that down, and it's been a kind of a mixed thing. Some residents want it, some don't want it, but we've, we purchased that land and are working with the staff to make that a great project, hopefully, and this project has been very interesting because we, we first jumped in and we said, so what, what do you need? What, you know, how can we help? I mean, we wanna be a good, good contributor to the community. And Mark didn't waste any time. You should, you should give him a raise or something. He said, we need money for Foothill Boulevard. So, that became kind of a focal point. And so, as we went forward and got our funding so we could close on the land and start off sites and other infrastructure, we included the monies that we talked about here to advance so that you could get that going sooner rather than later. I think it helps everyone in that quadrant to move around a little bit better. We're also working for, with the church so that we can come north down the hill out of our property and then tie into the church's property on the, on the west side of the church's property that's in the State Center and Temple. We just think that we can help with traffic flow quite a bit. Of course, it helps, it helps our, our buyers as well, and it makes our project better, but it just seemed like a good thing to team up with, with the city on, so we're happy to do it. Any questions that you have for us?
It is a public hearing. Do you have comments for the applicant before we go to the public hearing?
No, I just, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank him for bringing in some larger lots.
If you know that property, you go up into that corner, and it's the best view possible, so.
Yeah.
That's where we wanted those larger lots to be, and, and right up against the BLM land as well. Should be really wonderful.
Perfect. Okay, we'll open up the public hearing. Is anybody here for the public hearing on the Rushton West Annexation? Please be respectful in your comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and please avoid any repetitive comments. Anybody here for input? Okay. I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion from the council. There's no questions? Michael?
So, I just wanted to point out, I appreciated the clarity on the three units per acre for the whole project. I appreciate the working with staff to have those larger lots. Council member Wildon and I have often been known to say this comment, we don't approve higher density housing unless the city is going to benefit from it. So, overall, the whole project is gonna be three units per acre, but even some of the higher density product, because we're getting advanced on helping us with the freeway, we're getting advancements to help us with the community overall, we're getting the bigger lot, so the city is gaining a lot as a result of offering the higher density. And so, again, I've, I've never voted for higher density unless there was a good return for the long-term investment for the city, so I appreciate everyone working together. And again, it just reiterates the fact that when people come with good intention, come to the table and work together, great things can happen. It's when it's selfish or looking out for only yourself, that's when we come into problems and we get into arguments here at the council. So I just really appreciate, as I was looking through the packet, I just kept going, wow, I just was like really impressed. So thank you, and thank you to the staff.
Councilman Karn?
Yeah, my, my only questions here, and Mark, you kind of addressed it, is with the R110 that's already approved, and then this new project, this new annexation with the zoning that we bring in, do we anticipate Foothill being fully open and operational before most of this stuff comes in? Because this is a lot more housing that we gotta, a lot more cars, we gotta move around that area.
Right. So, there's really two phases to this project. There's Canton East, which is east of the Foothill Corridor. There's currently construction going on right now.
Yeah, that's moving dirt.
And so, we expect that those lots will probably be coming on in, you know, the next several months.
That's not a whole lot there.
That's not. You've got, before they're actually gonna be able to pull permits in this area, we're gonna have to build tanks, ponds for the water system, we're gonna have to build a booster station. It's gonna take some time, and they're moving fast and they're very motivated, but there's a lot of infrastructure that's gonna have to come together. And again, we're probably going to be, i- if we take a nine-month build on, on homes, which is kind of what we're seeing across the board, you know, they're still a few months out from having, you know, their plans probably fully ready to go. It'll be close, but we think that most of the traffic concerns can be, can be mitigated with.
But before Canton West even starts, we're thinking.
We're gonna, we're gonna.
It will be well, well, well underway.
We're hoping that it's well underway, yep. Again, we're hoping that we can be out to bid for that by the end of this month. We're probably 90% on the drawings for Foothill. We are still trying to acquire some right-of-way, and as soon as that right-of-way, but even if the right-of-way is held up, we still can get the contract going basically from the back of Beacon Point to Grandview Boulevard, which would open that line up. Again, we still need to push forward. There's a lot of, of construction that has to take place, but I, I feel like there will be very good viable alternatives besides just going through Rocky Ridge area.
And, and to, to add to that, so there are some current applications on our desk with Canton Ridge West and Canton Ridge B, which is on the east side. There, we, we will be providing, they have, they will be providing some temporary access for Canton Ridge West, because it was part of the previous annexation agreement, so that has come forward. As Foothill Boulevard gets going and gets completed, more than likely with the infrastructure that's required in Canton Ridge West, that temporary access may not be needed because of Foothill Boulevard. So, I mean, we did, we did provide that allowance so that we could get traffic over if that ever happens, but it's, you know, it's gonna be the chicken before the egg scenario on this. In a sense, however, it depends on how fast the, the building of the infrastructure will be on Canton Ridge West, so.
So, to, to be fair, Larry and his team is very motivated, and they're gonna be moving very fast, and as you know, we're very motivated on Foothill, and we'll be moving very fast. So, again, can't predict exactly how that will work, but at a minimum, they will have access.
I would like to win the race.
We're, we're trying to win the race, yes.
Okay.
And, and in that, like, like Mark had said, the, the connection to, will go into Beacon Point from Foothill Boulevard, so there will be secondary egress for, for that. So, until Mountain View Corridor goes in, there is a temporary access that will go over. Currently, how it will be approved with Canton Ridge West, it will go through the Canton Ridge East subdivision, but more than likely, it will hit Foothill Boulevard and then be able to go up and access will be through Beacon Point. So, there, there's a lot of things going in play with this entire sub, with this entire development agreement and the previously submitted applications, so.
We've got a lot of infrastructure. There's a lot of pieces coming together. Sitla will be, I believe, a partner with, with Canton on getting the, the.
Water.
The, the water tanks and stuff built. Again, regional infrastructure's going in, so there's a lot of parts, and we'll keep you up to date as things progress.
Any other questions?
Okay, entertain a motion then.
I move to approve public hearing number two, Rushton West Annexation Development Agreement. Ordinance 22-3, dated 1/4/22, with all findings and conditions.
I have a first from Councilman Karn, a second from Councilman McComber. Okay.
You have the Rushton West Annexation Development Agreement and the annexation.
Oh, thank you, and the annexation.
Okay, so we have amended first, amended second. Any other comments?
No.
Karn?
Aye.
Wildon?
Aye.
McComber? Porter?
Aye.
Podeska?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, business item one, the Crossing Village Plan 3A major amendment.
Uh, Mayor and Council, the Boyer Companies requested an amendment to Village Plan 3A at the Crossing, which pretty much entails signage. Uh, the way the current community plan is written right now, whether it was intended or not, it says basically the signage is approved based on what's on the elevations. Uh, you know, historically in the past on the Crossing, uh, there's been a few sign amendments come through to allow more than one sign on the same elevation. Uh, that's basically what the applicant is asking for tonight, is to allow secondary signage on the same elevation as the primary sign. It was done in the past with Fat Cats, it was approved with Les Schwab, and so they're following suit similar to what, what's already been done on the Crossing. They are also asking, and I apologize, I couldn't, when I dragged it on that other monitor, it would not scroll for some reason, so. Um, and the other changes are, are the banner signs they like to allow. They're asking for larger sizes and multiple banner signs for temporary, and then a, a pennant, a streamer. Now, this one did go to the Planning Commission on a public hearing. They recommend approval of the wall signs, however, they recommend denial of doing anything beyond Title 19 as far as banners, and, and not allowing the streamers as well.
Could you define what streamers is? I had that question asked of me, and quite frankly.
Have you been to Crazy Larry's Used Autos?
No.
No, don't. Now, just the small little triangular pennants on a, on a strand, basically multiple tiny little pennants, defined as, as streamers in our code.
Okay.
And Title 19 doesn't allow.
Title 19 doesn't allow the streamers. Uh, in, in your packet, under the, the Village Plan 3A, you do have the red lines, so I made comments of, this does mean Title 19, this doesn't, and so you can see what, what's requested. And again, the Planning Commission recommends approval of the wall sign changes, denial of the, anything beyond Title 19 for banners, and denial of the streamers.
Any changes we make would only apply to this application. It does not.
Yeah, Village Plan 3A.
The next one comes in, and the next one comes in. Yeah.
Village Plan 3A only.
So the applicant is here, Scott Verhern with the Boyer. If you would like to have questions, or if there's any questions or things that you could target specifically to him, I know he is here, and we'll throw him up in the hot speed if you wanna come join us, uh, so that he can help tackle any questions that might be there from the applicant's standpoint.
Okay, go for it.
So, we have to shut this down. This is, I mean, I just went down, like, by Hobby Lobby today on purpose, in American Fork. It's horrible. There are signs everywhere, sign, 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 sign. You literally can't see the signs anymore because there's so many signs. What happens when Hobby Lobby decides that they want a seventh different category of things? By the way, the American Fork one does not have six, it only has four. So I think it's interesting that they're actually coming and saying, we want even more. They have Hobby Lobby plus four. I personally don't like this because then Sports and Warehouse is gonna come and say, fishing, hunting, then we're gonna have all of that. Then we're gonna have Ultra say, makeup, hair supplies, shampoo, conditioner. I mean, when do we wanna put wall signs and say, what's in your store? This is the same thing that we had many years ago, about a decade ago. We had everyone who wanted to put signs into all their windows, so you can never see in the windows, and it almost makes it blacked out. There are those dots, so when you're inside, you can see out, but you can't see in. It looks very messy, and it looks very convoluted, and it was voted on by that council that we wouldn't allow that. I appreciate this. Olive Garden's gonna come in and say, we want one on every single side, we want a podium one, we want Italian, this. I mean, it, it's just gonna get out of control. I was okay with this with Fat Cats because it's such a large building, and the two signs are completely opposite sides of the building, so we had some, some exceptions that we made, but really, we have to, you guys, we cannot allow this because all of these stores are gonna then say, the stores at Walmart, they're gonna want a bunch more signs. They're gonna want signs everywhere, are gonna want more and more signs because people think that signs is what brings people in. I personally do not believe that. I believe good pricing and good marketing from your newspapers, online Facebook are what bring people in. I'm sorry, if you don't know that Hobby Lobby has crafts, frames, art supplies, then you probably shouldn't go on Hobby Lobby, because you're gonna, I mean, everybody knows what's in there. So I personally am very much against this. We have to put a stop to this because every single new building that comes in is gonna have more and more requests. Every single corner, every single side of the wall, like, I mean, even now, some of the buildings, you can see, they're like, the, the two logos on the two sides of the elevation are within eight feet of each other on some of our other buildings because they're working against us. They're working against our code because we have a, a west side elevation and a north side elevation, and they're putting their big logo right on both sides of the corner so you can see both of them at the same time. So I just, again, Orem State Street, American Fork State Street, just go look at these. We have to keep, they would never ask Park City for this. Draper would never get this request. And I just think that they're taking advantage. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other council members?
Dave, could you go through maybe some of the difference between the village plan and Title 19? I know some of the things they were requesting is allowable in Title 19, and some of it is not allowable in the village plan or Title 19. So I, I'd like to specifically know what those are.
Yeah, Title 19, basically for, for building signs. Uh, for a business, you can have one primary sign, two, and two secondary signs, but they, the secondary signs cannot be in the same elevation as the primary sign. And so, what they're requesting now would be to have those signs on the same elevation. Of course, the, the, the east wall in this case, that's their, that's the customer access, that's the primary visual from Redwood Road, so they, they'd want the, more signage there. To, to bring up, the, the last village plan that you looked at was Market Street Village Plan, the, the village plan of Costco, the second one in the Costco Community Plan. And I did bring this point up, that we had, we're running an issue where if we had a building that was in the village plan, and that it showed signage, and you approved the signage, it was done that way, because that's how the code is written, but if another building came in, which didn't have a concept plan yet, didn't have elevations yet, they would have to come in, but they would have to follow Title 19, because their elevations were not in the adopted village plan. So what you, what you did as the council on Market Street, you said basically from, at that point, all building signs themselves will comply with Title 19. So that's the last action you did, as far as building signs go, in, in village plans.
And, you know, that, that helps from the explanation part, is when I went through it the first time, I maybe went a little bit too quickly. I was thinking all the signs requests outside of the streamer. I didn't know what a streamer was. I thought it was that guy in the air, the blow-up thing. Um, were all within Title 19. I mean, my preference, I don't think we ever intended the village plan to be more restrictive than Title 19, but I don't wanna open it up to be more, um, more options.
More lenient.
More lenient than Title 19.
So what you said, though, was we went, we said that we follow Title 19.
When Market Street came in, because I, I gave you the comparison of, because it was Olive Garden. Olive Garden had four signs on their building, but the, say, the building pad next to Olive Garden did not have a building elevation yet. When that saw, when that site came in, they would have to go with. When that saw, when that site came in, they would have to go entirely, they could only have three. But yet Olive Garden next to them was able to get four. So there's an issue of fairness there as well. So in the discussion we had, it was determined and you approved of that, okay, Market Street Village Plan, Title Nineteen for building signs.
It's consistent.
Scott, could you help us understand why the applicants and why these businesses are so concerned about this additional signage? Maybe kind of help us frame why this is such an important request on your behalf.
I am, I'm happy to. And I appreciate the input. Just maybe a little bit of background that would help with this phase that we're doing in Saratoga right now. The, just to give you a little bit of context, this phase of Saratoga that we're doing right now, our lender as well as Fargo, this is the first retail project of this size they've done in the country in two years since COVID started. And they've, and these tenants have all elected to come to Saratoga Springs for many reasons. The growth is obviously important. They understand what is happening with transportation and things of that nature. They're obviously intrigued by Costco and what's going on at Smith's and the perception of a development-friendly community, and we've got a very good relationship with these tenants. The Boyer Company is not a huge fan of signage. If you look at our office buildings, we try very desperately to keep signs off of our office buildings. A big tenant will get a sign there. Retailers are very uptight about the signage that they like on their buildings and Councilman McComber, I appreciate your comments. We don't love to have signs, but we have come to the conclusion that with national tenants that have signage programs that we generally, so long as they comply with code in a city, will approve their, the signs that they have. They're concerned about having to, and it's not always perfect, and because you pointed out that they have four departments, they've listed in American Fork, but they want to have an image that is consistent throughout the country so as a consumer goes from city to city, state to state, region to region, with something, they understand that they're, it's a Hobby Lobby, it's a Ross, it's whatever the case may be. They spent a lot of money on it, they spent a lot of time on it. And we try to keep things within sign bands, and that's the way we design buildings, the way that we do. When we brought this plan through, the Village Plan, we didn't know who the tenants would be. It's happened much more quickly than we anticipated. And the tenants have the mindset and hope that they can have their traditional signage package. This will be our fourth location that we've done with Hobby Lobby in the state. This is consistent with sign packages we've done with them in, in South Jordan and in Sandy and also in Orem on University Parkway, and that's the reason that they're requesting that. What, what's being requested from Ross, we don't love streamers, we don't love banners ourselves, so, and that's a temporary thing. Doesn't bother us a bit that that's not there, and they get shot down a lot of communities when they request that anyway. But the other tenants, Ulta, Sportsmans, everybody else, these are the signage packages that you would normally see from them in most other communities. So responding to requests from the tenants, had we known who they were, we brought the Village Plan through, we would have included that at the time. We didn't, and hence the reason we're coming back now to seek approval for their current national signed packages.
Oh. Is it okay if I go? Um. I'll say that a lot of like, I mean, the Ross ones almost look like they're just thrown on because they, everybody else is getting multiple signs, so we want a couple of little Ross signs off on the edge. Most of these do seem perhaps excessive, specifically the Hobby Lobby. The one that makes some sense to me is the, the Petco, where they have a separate entrance. They want, they obviously want to guide people to that secondary business, the vet center.
What are all the words on the right though?
I don't, I don't, yeah, I couldn't read what those were.
Couldn't read it either. Again, telling everything you do in Pet.
Okay, so, yeah, like, I, th- those ones I'm less, less concerned about as much as, you know, the Vetco Total Care. I understand why. Because if you go into them, they, it is a separate, it's almost like a store within a store. It's, it's, it's separate business kind of thing. That's the, the one I'm leaning towards, you know, allowing something of, you know, for a secondary business that's inside or something like that. But, yeah, the streamers are obviously not. I don't think anybody is in favor.
You can't have those banners either because look at them right now. They're all destroyed and ripped up and falling apart all over the city.
What, what is the, what is the, I mean, the banners are just there for like the grand opening, right?
Yeah, I mean, the, the way the code is now, you can have one banner thirty days, might, might be forty-five, but thirty to forty-five days
And what's the request?
In a calendar year.
Right.
There is a separate banner you can do for a grand opening, which is, there's no size limit, but it says it's going to be larger than the standard banner requirements. So, yeah, they can get two in the course of, you know, a year. One would be a grand opening, you only can carry on the next year, obviously, but there is the provision, you can have, you know, one banner per business.
Right.
If, if I may interrupt, we don't, typically in our leases, and we're pretty successful with that, we do not allow tenants to have banners once they've opened up. And usually they can only have a grand opening banner of a specific size, not to exceed thirty days prior to and following opening. And even then, we try to keep that limit as much as we can. So once a tenant is opened, we try to keep those banners.
Under control.
Well, under, we don't like them, period.
So, so my understanding is you're just passing on the request of the tenants?
Yeah, the tenants, and, and all of you know this, tenants are not easy to deal with. This is my thirteenth shopping center, and I have never had a more difficult time with retailers in twenty-eight years of dealing with them. And that ranges from the Gateway to Redstone to the Combs, the Sugar House. And being very candid with you, if you want tenants in, this is kind of what you have to deal with. Now, you can say no, and you will probably hear from them again, either via me or through them directly. And that's just, just the way it is. It just, retail development is extraordinarily challenging and very, very difficult right now.
I, so I, I guess my question to staff and/or Boyer is, is there some sort of accommodation we can make for, I mean, similar to like Smith has a Starbucks inside, or at one, at one point, if I was planning it, they, they do, don't they? Yeah, they do. Um, you know, is there something we can, we can, we can have where we can allow a ancillary business that is included in the bigger thing to also have some signage?
Yeah, you can include.
I mean, we could do something with Village Plan, but I'm just wondering, is there?
I mean, that, that would probably apply for Petco, I guess, because I know if, if I recall, they may have like a separate veterinarian that may be there that, you know, says leases space, I guess. Hobby Lobby's all one business.
Right.
I do know, and I did send Scott a picture of this, I was, I live in Spanish Fork and they just built a little Hobby Lobby there. All of those smaller signs of, you know, Doily's, Giga, whatever, they're, they're, it's, it's directly under the Hobby Lobby. And, yeah, worst case, they could do that here, and if it's less than twelve inches, we just consider that one sign then. We don't, can't regulate the content. We'll regulate the shape and the square footage.
Right.
Still get their content.
Right, but in, in, in the case of if there's an ancillary business that, you know, perhaps, you know, you limit, if it requires a separate, you know, a business license or whatever, that, if that, the truly ancillary use, then they could then have, that'd be up for discussion with the council.
I guess that's my, my question to councils, if we can have some sort of accommodation for these ancillary businesses rather, I, I'm, I'm not interested in allowing Ross to have tiny little Ross signs on the side of their building.
And Hobby Lobby to have huge.
Right.
I, I actually think that's a great idea because it's separate business, usually you're subleasing or they have a business license.
Yeah.
I like the business license.
Tie it to a business license.
Because like you're.
That's some concrete we can tie it to.
Even the, even the grooming is a separate company typically, contracts with Petco.
So I, I, I'm open to something like that that allows for any, an entity with a, a, an independent business license or a separate business license to get a.
Could have a secondary, secondary sign.
But then I don't want Hobby Lobby going and paying thirty-five dollars for each of the licenses and having a crafts license for the state of Utah and a seasonal business. Because they're on thirty-five dollars a piece with the state of Utah, and then they're going to get around this business license, and they're going to sign up a business license for each one of their little subcategories. So I don't want people manipulating the system either.
Dave, if I could, so under Title Nineteen, they already do have an option for grand opening signage.
Right, that temporary, yes.
Yeah, temporary.
You can have a banner and a grand opening.
And, and Scott, it sounds to me like your practice is, is that you let them have thirty days before and then thirty days after they open their store.
If we absolutely have to.
If you absolutely have to.
Yes.
And, and what, what I think is some of the challenge, if I'm interpreting what the mayor and council are saying correctly, is, is you've got, say, for example, in Ross, you've got multiple different types of banners that proposing at multiple different times. Is there a way that those could be consolidated into single banners that would meet your time, your general time restrictions of thirty days before? And then we already have a code that allows for a banner sign afterwards. So is there a way that we can consolidate it so it fits within the box of Title Nineteen for those advertising temporary signs?
Well, from our standpoint, yes. I mean, if we said that they got thirty days prior to and thirty days following and all they have is a grand opening banner attached to the fascia, that, that's, that's great. I mean, I, I think that's plenty, and from our standpoint, that's more than plenty to do that. I think the bigger challenge is with the building signage itself. Now, in our leases, and I assume it's the same way with the city, when we attach an exhibit that shows the signage has been approved, it has to be approved by the city, and it cannot be modified without our approval and the approval of the city. So from our standpoint, if you were to prove something like the Ross store, let's take that as an example, with their two oval signs on the side, they can't make any modification to that without our approval, and our approval can only be granted if the city grants approvals. They can't make any modification to the signage going forward without those two approvals. And that's the way we try to control it. We, we try to be, we try to be understanding about their signage packages and understand that they're doing this throughout the country, and they've invested money in it, and they, we get it. And so that's the way we try to control it, is we get, we get the, we get the vote by only approving a modification to the lease. We only approve a modification to the lease if the municipality, in this case Saratoga Springs, says five years from now, if they want to come in and do something different with the signs, they have to have approval from Dave's group, from you and from us to do it. That's the way we control signage going forward.
And you've done a good job, Smiths. You worked with them when they were doing Getting Carried Away, and you worked with them to get the signs down and stuff, so I appreciate that. I just, these permanent long-term signs. The little Ross signs, it just seems like they heard that Hobby Lobby is doing it, so like, oh, let's put two more little Ross signs in.
Well, they, they haven't. I mean, it's their part of their national signage package.
I was at the Provo one, and they don't have them.
They've added it recently. It's probably, we've seen it pop up, we've got six stores with Ross.
Well, no, the Provo store is brand new. It opened not even maybe six months ago.
Yeah, it's, I think it's something they're trying to roll out now. You'll probably see that in all their.
Right.
Going forward.
I, I just, like, as far as Hobby Lobby and stuff, I would prefer to go the Spanish Fork route where if they can fit it in as part of their main sign, then they're following Title Nineteen and.
The one they already put up.
You know, that's, that's fine. I, I, yeah. Anyway, so I, I've.
Candidly.
I've said my piece, I guess.
I think the tenants are going to be more concerned about their permanent signage than their grand opening signage. I mean, that, that's, that's, I don't, I don't think that, I know that. That's just a given.
Right.
So our grand opening, Dave, is forty-five days?
Forty-five days, yeah.
So the signage before and after, it's a fifteen day extension on that.
Not worried about the.
Again, and, and I think that that's, I think that's been kind of worked largely through. So the question really is, is, is on, and I'm looking through the, the exhibits. So the, the council still has concerns with the multiple descriptors for the Hobby Lobby store.
And the Petco.
And Petco and Ross.
And Petco, you seemed like you were okay with the Vetco, but not that little list of, of services they provide right underneath the.
Basically the things they sell in Petco. It's the list of things they sell in Petco.
Okay.
I would probably be more okay with what Hobby Lobby is asking for if there was a square footage so that the little stores you're talking about don't come in. Because if I go over to Walmart, you've got home decor on one side, you've got groceries on the other, and people know what Walmart sells. But it, it kind of got it, but my concern is exactly where you're at with the small ones. They want fourteen signs on a small building. So is it for a retailer of certain square footage to have that? Because you say Hobby Lobby. Yeah, I know what it is because my wife does crafting, but if I was just driving by, do they sell RC cars? If I'd never been in there, wasn't, I mean, it's not a hobby, it's hobby, but not their hobby.
Yeah, so, so what we look at, a, a wall sign can take up to eight percent of that facade. And then a, a secondary sign would be fifty percent of whatever the primary sign is. Not to say, and, and businesses usually don't max out that eight percent either. So it's, it's not fifty percent of the eight percent, it's fifty percent of what you.
They're lit.
Identify as your primary would then be reduced to, to half.
All orange.
Scott, are they lit? Are all of the little sub-signs lit?
Yes.
Yes, and they're all orange. Yeah, that is.
Do you know what percentage this proposed area is, Dave? It looks like the signs and square footage on pa, Exhibit Fifteen is four hundred and sixty-three square feet.
That would be the main Hobby Lobby sign?
That, that includes the main Hobby Lobby sign at two seventy-seven, and then it looks like it's about twenty-three to forty-two square feet for each of the sub-signs.
For each word.
So you're, you're almost two hundred square feet, a hundred and ninety square feet in excess of the main Hobby Lobby sign.
But we don't, Title Nineteen doesn't allow for more than one sign on the elevation.
Correct, the primary, they'd have to go on.
They can put the seasonal crafts underneath the Hobby Lobby, do it as one sign.
By Title Nineteen, because again, we don't regulate content. We view their code as it's written. If it's less than twelve inches apart.
We don't judge, we do not judge content because we believe in free speech in this country, so.
So less than twelve inches, we consider that one sign.
I like the Spanish Fork approach. Let them follow Title Nineteen and just, they've already have a design already, they've already paid for it once, they could do it. We're just going to be here again every time, you guys, they come in. Everyone's going to want, 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 want.
Well, it may be a good thing or a bad thing. I don't think you're going to see a lot more retailers coming in the future.
Are the names in the pack and back are the friction of who's coming into this project?
I'll tell you exactly who's coming. We got Hobby Lobby, they'll be next to Ross, Sportsman's Warehouse, Five Below, Ulta, Petco. And then we have a lease that should be finalized with another tenant on the north side of the, of the, that run of buildings.
Yeah, there's a, there's a new name listed here that I hadn't seen before. That's what I'm wondering.
Who's that?
Desert Book.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it'll be, it'll be them.
I mean, it's listed in the public information at this point, so.
It'll be them plus Sweet Solid. It's not a signed lease yet, but it's out for signature. And then that, that doesn't include any of the out parcels that are along Redwood Road, but that's, that's signage.
So, so some of my questions here is this, not every retailer that's on, listed here is asking for additional signed packages. Like the Sportsman's Warehouse, they could have a camping, fishing, hunting. Are they going to come back and ask us for that?
They have that on Provo, don't they?
But, yeah, I think they do have sub-signs on their building, yeah. So are they, are they going to come back and ask if we, you know, if we do this? I think you might, I think you're right. I think we're going to.
Liquid Title Nineteen.
We're going to be getting asked over and over on this.
So, Dave, what percentage was the signage allowed to be of the front of the building?
Eight, eight percent of that facade.
So, real quickly, I was just doing some math. It looks like what Hobby Lobby is asking for is just, just over fifteen percent of the front facade.
But it's spread out.
It is spread out, yeah.
That makes a difference.
Yeah, it's about fifteen percent, so almost double what our normal.
But it's fifteen percent, but it's long.
Yes.
Not fifteen percent like that.
Across the two hundred and forty feet of the building front.
And, and in a sense, they're taking what, what's allowed in Title Nineteen. Let's just say you've got, you know, the, the main Hobby Lobby, then the secondary, you know, group those to secondary, where there's combined them, so overall may, you know, instead of putting on the back of the building, they bring it down to the fronts. Overall, it may not exceed, if, because if they go fifty percent, they may not be exceeding the overall total.
Are they putting Hobby Lobby sign on the south's face as well?
No.
Anything on that to face Smith's?
No, they haven't requested anything.
They will.
I, I don't think they will.
All the people in Smith's looking over?
I, I doubt it. I, I think if they, if they wanted to, I think that request would have been made.
I think you can see the Hobby Lobby because it's a little bit set back.
Set backs, it's set back a bit, yeah.
Which was good design, to get that setback so that you have the visibility.
I'd like to say we were really brilliant, but it's all a function of parking. It's just the way it worked out.
A lot of parking, yeah.
Mayor, a quick question for me.
Okay.
What was the rationale with the Fat Cats? Because I was looking at their, their front elevation. And I do see that there's basically a kind of a gap as, as far as like another store, if this was like a script mall, you know, another store would fit there with no signage between theirs, maybe not cinema, bowling, grill, so.
Well, you're asking what the rationale was?
Yeah, like, how, how did we come across to allowing that?
Yeah, I, I don't recall what the rationale was, but I think you could probably pin it down. I think you, Councilman McComber, you said it's one business, that's in, in that entire building.
And it's an entire building, like the size of a Walmart.
So where are we on this? I, I mean, I, I like Porter and Councilman McComber. I think you like Porter's suggestion. If it's an ancillary build, not building, ancillary business with a separate business license or something, allowing something for that.
Would you still want to put it, I mean, what if you have Petco, let's say there's three in there? Do you still want to limit it? Do you still want to limit the total number that can go on the outside or just any? Anyone that holds a business license can have a sign.
What about its own entrance?
What's the difference? That's, I think, for me, that's more important is that it has its own entrance.
If you had a bank, I doubt a bank's going into Hobby Lobby, but you know, if you had a bank, they're not going to have their own separate entrance.
Because we allow the banks on.
Or Starbucks.
Yeah, that's fair. I'm just, I'm just trying to think of a, of a, of a good metric that we can, that's a standard thing that we can say. This is when we allow a secondary sign and.
I would just say a separately identifiable business.
And it's much smaller, like Starbucks is way smaller, the bank sign is smaller.
Think about someone like a Desert Book. I don't know if distribution services is considered a separate business.
They actually usually put Desert Book Distribute, and then underneath it, they have it in.
I don't know if one's owned by the CPB and one's, one's owned by.
The church.
You, you, you'd probably know better than we do.
They are separate.
They are two separate businesses.
So, I mean, I, I, I guess that would be my, my preference is that there's two business entities in, in the same building that the, that we allow a secondary sign for that second.
So just one other business.
So the challenge with that, so for example, on a Petco, I'm thinking of the signage that's right underneath that sconza. It, it says grooming, it says all these different things. They technically are going to have different groomers in there, just like they would a vet. They could have different people in there. They could have adoptions in there as those types of stores generally have. And so I think to your point, that was one of the things, and I, I bring this up because that was one of the things that you'd said, hey, we're not really in favor of this on the Petco building, but they, they are listing, they are listing the different types of businesses and services that they offer.
Just one, one auxiliary business, they can have one second, up to one secondary sign. And at that, you know, at that point, if they, if the groomer wants to pay Petco more to get the groomers sign on there, then the groomer can. But I'm guessing that they're going to go with the vet, so.
So, so again, you know, I just got the slide up. It says, it says grooming options, dog training, dog wash and vet care. Hey, Mark, just talk with some of the council members. We're trying to write code on the fly and we're going to end up with crappy version that neither of us are going to be happy with. If the applicant's okay and staff, could we bring it back in two weeks and maybe have something?
That we can actually vote on.
That we can vote on?
And just note, Title nineteen, we voted on that before. I think we stick with Title nineteen. And if we make a variance, to your point, it should be a variance. It shouldn't be a change in code. It should be an including code that says we allow a variance. If the council approves, then you don't have to worry about, to your point, I agree, it's writing code and stuff. But we voted on this last time to do Title nineteen to keep it consistent so that this development doesn't have an advantage over Walmart, over what's going to go in next to Taco Bell and these, we, we, we want to stick to Title nineteen so everything's consistent for a reason.
May, may I ask then, if, if you were to say, and Dave has pointed out, and it is more restricted in our village plan because we just, as I mentioned, we did not know who the retailers were going to be. Now, the good thing is, I never anticipated we'd be at this point with buildings under construction this quickly. So it's, it's fantastic. I hope that's fantastic for the city. It's fantastic for us. So our village plan is more restricted than Title nineteen. At this point, and it doesn't preclude us coming back and asking for something different, but it would almost be more, be more beneficial for me to go back to each one of these retailers and say, what you're able to do needs to be consistent with Saratoga City's Title nineteen.
Even your little out buildings with the three signs on them, that's why we did it, so that you have the different angles on the little buildings so you can see them.
But if you can, if you can, if you, Hobby Lobby, you, Petco, you, Ross can comply with Title nineteen. There's no further discussion. We don't have to go back and ask for variance. We don't have to do anything. Now, I know retailers well enough that they'll probably say not good enough and they'll want to come back and do it. But from, if you were to say tonight, however we're doing that. Follow Title nineteen, then that gives me something to go back and say to them, that's what you need to do. Please talk to Dave and his staff to get that approved. And if they still want to have some modifications, then we'll have to have that conversation another, another time. But I'd rather try to solve it that way than try to figure out, I don't know, I mean, I know what they want, but sometimes to say, kind of like with toddler, this is all you can do, then, then that, that might be the best thing you can do.
You guys have been a great partner, so I think we're trying to make something work. It felt like we were trying to force something too quick. But if you're okay with that.
Yeah, I, I'd rather start there and just say comply with Title nineteen. And then if, if I need to, I'll call Dave again and see if we can try to bring it back and talk, and talk about it.
So you would, your request then would be to approve the village plan so long as it is consistent with Title nineteen?
Yes, and Dave, I believe that's consistent with, you and I talked about.
Signage.
And then Wiltz, and then I'm, yeah, the grand opening signs, I'm fine with Title nineteen.
Your, your grand opening signage is more permissive than ours is, and that's fine.
And then no on the.
On streamers.
Well, on the streamers, we don't allow in Title nineteen.
Title nineteen doesn't allow that.
Right.
You just made this easier for us, this motion.
Yeah, we'll, we'll just have the applicant resubmit a page. If that's what you choose to go ahead and do, is have them resubmit some language I will add that says all building signs comply with Title nineteen.
That would be the best.
Well, and I, maybe it's just me, if they need to come back, I'd be open to a working session versus.
Right.
Dave, does Title nineteen allow all the signs that are in the construction right now?
I don't think we have any that.
Hobby Lobby's on.
Hobby Lobby's up.
Hobby Lobby's.
Their main one.
Hobby Lobby? Yeah, and that'd be consistent with Title nineteen right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You go to Facebook, you'll know what's up because everyone posts every time something goes up.
I, I was surprised that the, their Hobby Lobby sign is actually smaller than I think the one in Lehigh or American Fork. As far as the, the size of the lettering.
You know what? Actually, I went and looked today. It's the same. It's just the American Fork building's so small.
Oh, okay.
So it looks like proportionately.
Portionally it looks small.
So may I ask for clarification then? So Dave, is that, do I, do we need to submit something again to you?
Well, yeah, there has to be. I mean, the council would have to direct us, whatever their motion is, to say, work with staff to approve what they're going to approve. And you and I then would just work together, AWI, to, to get a page.
We got a motion.
Put in there that would say, consistent with Title nineteen.
Okay.
I'm, I'll move if you're ready.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the Crossing Village Plan, three A major amendment, business item one. Directing staff to change any language surrounding signs to comply with Title nineteen. Current Title nineteen.
For signage.
For signage, that's what I said.
And all findings and conditions.
Oh, and all findings and conditions.
Can I second that?
Okay, I have a first from Councilman Porter, second from Councilman Carn. Any further discussion? Okay, Podeska.
Hi.
Carn.
Hi.
Wilden.
Hi.
McComber.
Hi.
Porter.
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Very excited.
Councilman Carn wanted to know when Sportsman's does their ribbon cutting, if he could shoot the ribbon to celebrate.
If I can shoot it from eight hundred yards away, maybe?
Actual car.
We don't allow any shooting of firearms.
It would be out of the city limits.
I'm pretty accurate.
De- annex the parking lot for the day.
Chris could probably find a Nerf gun somewhere.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, code amendments, Title nineteen, nineteen point two, nineteen point four, nineteen point nine, nineteen point nineteen.
Just open it up, you know, you've reviewed your packet. Are there any questions you have, what we're trying to achieve with this? There are some changes from staff, excuse me, from planning staff. There are some changes that were proposed by legal staff as well.
Questions from the council?
I don't see any.
I went through it. I just had one, since we're in here anyway. I would also like to remove nineteen nineteen oh eight two C. A requirement that we, we require people to fertilize. It's, it seems both unenforceable and a little bit subjective, so.
I, I, I actually can't recall my, what that is, what.
Fertilizer shall be applied as necessary, so I just.
That's so funny, shall as necessary. That's a totally oxymoron.
So I would just, I just, can we just remove that too?
What, what section is this, nineteen?
Nineteen nineteen oh eight C.
Oh, oh, eight C.
That's a good catch.
I was just reading through that. I'm like, you shall fertilize.
I didn't read anything that wasn't red, so. There's a lot to read.
We could change it if you like. It's, I just, let's just get rid of it.
Just change to May or eight.
If, if you may, you may have noticed that the language about the maintenance of open space looked familiar. That was basically the, substantially the same as the policy that you adopted in twenty fourteen. We just haven't had it in the code and it's been, it's, this will make it easier to have that, that discussion with developers. So it's more front and center.
Right.
And then, yeah, there's some definitions that we added as well. We needed a, we had some issues with people claiming that they weren't developers, even though they were developers. And they're trying to find these loopholes and we just simply needed, we needed to add some definitions and that's why those definitions are there. So now developer applies to anyone who is changing the use of any land, period. Whether it's a home, whether it's a subdivision or anything.
Got it.
That's why that's there as well.
I only have one question here, if you can. So this is a clarification. So, so driveways shall be a minimum of twenty feet deep. Am I just mistaken? Or I thought it was twenty-five feet when I was, I've been doing this for a while.
I thought it was twenty-five.
The setback is twenty-five.
But it says driveways shall be a minimum of twenty feet deep and eight feet wide for a single wide driveway and sixteen feet wide for a double wide driveway. But then parking stalls, which I think is interesting, you require nine feet.
Nine by eighteen is a typical stall. There are some developments that do have twenty foot. My gosh, there's some that have eleven as a front setback. But the, the garage itself would still have to be set back at twenty-five.
So the driveway, so from the garage to, it's going to be a twenty-five foot then, not twenty?
So some are, some are twenty, some are twenty-five. I'd have to dig into the.
So I would always remember twenty-five, and so I was wondering why we were going to twenty because we have some truck drivers, people, and those trucks are long.
Yeah.
And they just go out over to the sidewalk.
They're over twenty feet.
They're over twenty feet.
Mine's only nineteen-six.
Okay, because you're parked that close to your.
You drive a little truck.
Because you're parked that close to your garage door?
I got the short bed.
Do you have the sensor in the front? The sensor in the front? So for me personally, the whole point of a twenty-five foot driveway, and I feel like I'm Shelley Bartsch right now.
Fit a consumer vehicle.
Fit a consumer vehicle and not hang over the sidewalk, preventing kids' safe passage. And so I'm just concerned when I saw the twenty, this is really the only one. I really think it should be twenty-five feet.
Which one is that?
Garage.
Where are you?
So the recent.
Nineteen oh nine oh six.
Nineteen oh nine.
So Councilman McComber, if you look, not, just to clarify, not Commissioner McComber, so council member. I got that wrong a couple of times recently. I don't know why, but if you look at nineteen oh nine ten, it had that twenty-foot length there. It's just being moved. I don't know why, David, why you're moving that now. But it's always, it looks like it's always been twenty feet, but in reality, it's probably going to be twenty-five feet because of the setback. You got to meet both the twenty-foot length requirement and the setback requirement, so most of our setbacks are twenty-five feet.
Okay, I just.
Okay.
We just need to make sure that we're not setting ourselves up because I drive through some of these neighborhoods where we have the smaller driveway and then it's hanging into the sidewalk and these poor kids going, it's, you know, the hill that's going to Saratoga Shores Elementary on the south side that comes up through the neighborhood?
Uh huh.
That, that, those driveways, we made them too short and that, that road was made too small. It's why we changed the cross-section back to a bigger cross-section because you literally, on garbage day, cannot drive any car through there, let alone one, one direction.
So, yeah, so that's just being relocated. It's in there right now. Maybe what you could do is have staff look into that to see if.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we are going to have, so that a, a good-sized pickup truck is going to fit on the, within the space and still allow for an easement for the sidewalk.
Basically, a crew cab, short bed truck, which is the average. The Wilden, USS, Big Bowie are much bigger.
Well, yeah, so like, I mean, some of them would go beyond twenty-five feet, but like, just the majority of those cars, like a Suburban is not twenty-five feet. I think it's like twenty-three. So, yeah, so that's.
Do you want to just pull that, do you want to just pull that section and have them do some research?
So that, that's, like I mentioned, that section is not being changed. It's just, it's moved. We're not changing that. It's already there. It's already in that table in nineteen oh nine ten.
Twenty-five feet. I just swear, we've always been talking twenty-five feet and then all of a sudden I'm talking twenty, and so I just want clarification.
You're saying twelve is what?
Yeah.
Is just in a different spot.
The table in nineteen oh nine ten, nineteen oh nine ten, if you.
I don't have that in my picture. I take screenshots.
But I, I think that planning can look into that to see.
I guess just.
Come back with a recommendation on that.
We need to change that thing, bring it back.
That's the only of the things. I appreciated all the changes. Thank you.
Anything else? Just one question. Sorry. Just, are we changing the, the guest parking standard? It's all marked as red.
It's moving.
Moving.
Just moving. That's just moving too. Okay. That's all I had. Is it, I wanted to make sure we weren't.
I think, I think they are adding that, David.
They, they basically moved it to, to the table instead of having a specific words about it.
No, there, there's specific words about it.
And they use them as like a den.
Well, maybe I'm looking in the wrong spot.
Yeah, the rear load product.
Oh, the rear load.
Because you have that, like, there's no place to park. You purposely make it.
There's no parking, we want to at least require a little bit more because, yeah, most townhomes are probably going to get people are going to be using the garage now. Those vehicles have to be, this at least gives us a little.
Oh, that's what I meant.
As far as parking.
Yeah, it was, they're taking it out of the table and putting it into text. I just set it backwards.
So did the, did the quantity or the amounts change at all?
No, it was point oh, it was zero point two five in the table. They're just pulling it out and putting it in text form instead of, and then listing it as, as required in the table.
Well, did it, well, was it in, so now eleven D B, where it says driveways shall not, shall not count towards the guest parking requirement? Is that new?
That, that's new there.
That is, that is new.
Yeah, all that text is new.
That also helps out when people are, again, not using garages and they're parking out in the driveway. And while people do visit, you know, we need to at least provide some more guest parking.
The guest parking point two five per unit, I don't think's enough. Just in my opinion.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I guess I'm questioning not the point two five, whatever, you know, I don't disagree with you on that. But where we say driveway shall not count towards the guest parking requirement, we have certain areas where we've said, okay, in your HOAs, you have to use the garage and you're allowed for the driveway.
But they don't use the garages, you know, they store their stuff in it. Oh, the garages all get full of stuff and they turn them into dens?
Yeah, I, I see that in lots of cities, you know, you know, city planner, I go see, I, I look at things like. Yeah, I've seen a lot of townhomes where I live, a lot of towns don't have basements. So people don't have places to store, and generally, most of them store things in basements. You have a townhome, probably ninety percent of towns don't have basements. They start to move the garages out of there because that driveway is sealed open.
Oh, I guess this is just for two-family, three-family, multifamily in a bigger development. I was more focused on single-family, so that's fine.
Those, those are just.
But the parking wasn't.
Yeah. I mean, typically, these are going to be in an HOA. HOA is going to be right, like, I mean, in ours, we regulated on-street parking and made sure people parked in guest parking, so. Prefer to leave it up to them.
Okay.
I don't want a code enforcement.
Any other comments?
I'll entertain a motion on it.
You're striking something.
All right. I move that we approve business item two, code amendments, Title nineteen. Also removing nineteen dot nineteen dot oh eight two C. And there aren't any findings or conditions.
And to get clarification on the.
Oh, and to have staff bring back some clarif, uh, research and bring back clarification on nineteen oh nine five twelve.
The driveway.
That's the, the, about the twenty-foot driveway. Right, just figure, figure out what it should read.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a first from Councilman Porter, a second from Councilman McComber. Any further discussion?
I think you said that section on fertilizer, you wanted it moved?
Removed.
Removed. Okay, so not moved because you, you said to.
No, the, the other section is just for them to research and bring back.
Strike the language about the fertilizer requirement.
Yep.
Got it.
Okay. Podeska.
Hi.
Carn.
Hi.
Wilden.
Hi.
McComber.
Hi.
Porter.
Hi.
Motion passes.
If IFA knew we were doing that, they'd be here complaining.
Okay, I will adjourn the meeting.